Escobido Badola, if you will please, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All righty.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. School committee member and student reports. Ms. Hinden or Ms. Wilder?
So these past two weeks have been the AP tests and they concluded on Friday. Okay, sorry. The past two weeks have been the AP tests and they ended on Friday, but this week there are continuing makeup tests if you had two tests in one day, or if you were sick and missed one. And this past Saturday was prom and everyone got home safe and it was very successful. And the next two days, the 16th and 17th, are going to be the math MCAS for the 10th grade and the annual relays are this Thursday.
Last week at the Scholars banquet for the class of 2017, they gave out the Gold App to 30 people and the average GPA was a 3.94 among the recipients. And so this week is the seniors' last full week of school and the finals start for them next week. So there are three more senior events. Tomorrow night is the Rotary Awards, the next night is the Alumni Awards, and then the Senior Awards are May 31st. And then their graduation is the second and Goodrich Academy graduates on the first. And the baseball team is on a winning streak. They're kind of coming back after a couple of seasons, so they have three wins in a row right now and they're on track for the state tournament, so.
That's great. I noticed the column this morning in the paper about that good news. That's great.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Anything else? Questions from the committee?
I'd just like to comment what a great job that baseball team has done after such two losing seasons, what Coach Cusenza and that team has done to really turn things around.
Great.
I love it. And Wednesday night, right, it's the alumni meeting where we're going to be giving out awards to 112 students. So please attend if you can.
I attended the Scholars banquet too and that's an impressive group and I learned that you can go beyond a 4-0. I didn't think that was mathematically possible, but you can apparently, so. And there are a number of young people who are beyond the 4-0. School committee chair report. I have none other than to say that tonight we'll be going over the school budget for this year. Resource committee.
There'll be nothing for resource or school buildings.
No report, all right. Resource committee, nothing, okay. School building needs, policy committee. Who's that? Ms. Craigin is not here. Anyone have anything to report? Seeing none. Student support committee, yes?
So we met tonight and we covered a lot of old business things that we just wanted to make sure that we were wrapping up this year. And just to let people know, we've formed an instrumental music task force. There've been a couple of meetings, all designed with trying to expand instrumental programming, whether it's using gala fund for after-school or before-school extracurriculars, or through the school scheduling process itself, to just really ensure that there's some kind of instrumental instruction at all the schools. So that's our goal. And the superintendent, we asked if the superintendent could put together a survey to go out to parents and I think over 5,000 emails went out today on the list with the newest survey about communication, how do parents prefer to receive communication. We're trying to get a pulse on who's using Facebook, who's using email, who's looking at district websites, and what information should best be housed in all of those places so that people really have a good connection to their individual schools, but also to the district. And so we'll get results from that survey at our next meeting. We will be hearing, we've asked, the superintendent decided to put an update on our coordinated program review, which is a comprehensive review of special education, 504, and civil rights issues in the schools. And we're in the middle of really kind of what has been like a six-year cycle, so we would like to get an update and we will get an update in, I'm not sure if we, next meeting on that, so. And then we wanted to know how the signs of suicide program rollout went at the middle school. You guys, I'm sure people are kind of hearing the buzz about this Netflix program, 13 Reasons Why. And obviously, social emotional learning is a key element of everything we expect our schools to do still today and we wanted to know how that went. And what they've done is they've kind of worked with some of the, like a focus group at the high school to really reconfigure how they're going to roll that out. I think with this new buzz in this program, they wanted to kind of take a different approach. So stay tuned. We're working on some kind of a program to address that level of social emotional learning. And then under new business that we wanted to look at, we asked, wanted to know about teacher turnover rates in individual schools. And what we found is there are, like three weeks ago, there were some meetings held to form some subcommittees to look at some particular issues about discipline in the schools. And so those have formed and we'll be getting updates on that. And the last things we looked at were the gala program summaries, so we were looking at the groups that were funded through that gala event, which was a huge success this year, and we'll add thousands more dollars to a pool that teachers and staff members can apply to create after-school programming and give kids opportunities to do cool events throughout the school year. So that, we're really excited that that program's been a success. Thank you to everybody who went to the gala and supported it. I'm sure the superintendent will talk about that a little bit more. And then we just kind of looked at some guidelines about moving forward next year and how the gala grants are distributed and making sure that we're really maximizing the amount of kids who can benefit from that program. So a lot of good stuff at the student's.
Any questions from the committee?
None. Thank you, Ms. LeVell, very thorough. Appreciate it.
School personnel committee, I, when, we are still in negotiations with the nutrition group, we'll continue forward with that. Executive committee, there is no need. And we had, we've had the student reports. Move on to approve the minutes of regular school committee meeting for May 1st, 2017.
Make a motion.
Motion made, seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. No need for executive session. Communications. Do have an announcement to make. Save the date, folks. DPW Day Number Nine. And a quote, because little kids love big trucks, close quote. Wednesday, June 7th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Rain or shine, fun for all ages. And this is a note for the adults as well. Please wear your play clothes. And it's at the DPW Yard, 301 Broad Street, behind Crocker Field. There'll be a giant sand pile, trucks, bulldozers, snowplows, fire trucks, police vehicles, FATV truck, refreshments, heavy metal DPW art and jewelry exhibition, Title I program Fitchburg Public Schools. Fitchburg Public Library's Ms. Nicole reads Mike Mulligan and his steam shovel, with help from hand puppets from Riverfront Children's Theater, refreshments, and a student art contest. Don't miss it. And bring your money.
I think it's all free.
Is it, oh, it is?
It's all free.
Aren't there raffles and things like that? Nothing?
It's all free.
Really?
And DPW does a great job of working with the kids.
Yeah.
Letting them get on all the trucks and it's a great time.
Yeah, it's a great thing, yeah.
Great time.
What was the date? The 2nd? Or the 7th? 7th, okay.
7th, June 7th, 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Yep. Public comment. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment on any issues regarding school committee business? Seeing none, move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, we have three guests with us this evening. The first are some guests who talk about the peace poll, so I'll invite them to come up, come to the table here. And the peace poll is right behind our peacemaker, Pete Stevens. Nickname, Peace Stevens.
Peace Stevens. Peace Stevens.
So, there you go. Talk about your poll.
Hi, my name is Cheryl McGee Stewart. I'm from the Human Rights Commission.
And I'm Santa Amico from the Human Rights Commission.
And that's our peace poll we're very excited about. It's donated by Marguerite Gabrielli, who is very kind of her. And it's helmed at the Fitchburg Library and teachers can take it out, or businesses put it in their business, different classrooms, tis a lot of activities online that teachers can incorporate in their classroom lessons. And then we have a Facebook page for it, hoping that people will put the activities they've done so everybody can read from it. It's called Fitchburg Human Rights Commission Peace Poll Project on Facebook. And like I said, there's a lot of activities, a lot of ways of incorporating it to the classroom. And our first event for the peace poll that we're going to do as an activity is mixed with the Fitchburg Public Library. It'll be at the children's library. The date is June 17th, from 11:00 to 2:00. And we're going to have an education event, we'll talk about peace and what peace means to us. And Monty Tech is going to make us little mini peace polls so the children can decorate them, tabletop ones from wood. And Expresso's Pizza's going to donate pizza to us. So we're going to have a really fun day talking about peace with the children, ages four to 13. So we're hoping that people will want to come to that.
Thank you. Any comments from the committee? Yes.
So I was just reading who's on the commission. Are there students on the commission?
There are going to be, yes.
Okay. Is that, are you making the appeal to all the schools or to a certain age group or?
I believe they did do that, yes. At Fitchburg High School, a couple of students that are on the list. Yeah, Deanna Tally, you'd know better because you're in the process of approving those.
The?
Students, Fitchburg High students.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. That's, we got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
And we try to have students here and staff for presentations of things going on in the school, so our first presentation are the RAD Kids and their garden projects, so. And I think with the RAD Kids, not among, not the RAD Kids, are Sue Terigni and Kelly Morrison. So bring on the RAD Kids.
I'm going to play a slideshow just in the background because it'll help to tell the story of what we have going on. So I am the program director for the 21st century and we have three programs. One's at Long Joe, one's at Crocker Elementary School, and then South Street is one of our newest projects. And all three programs are wrapping up for the school year. And we started in December with a project-based learning workshop that we attended and it was provided by the DESE and came back with a lot of really strong ideas that we wanted to share and share with the kids. So it started out with just recycling and then we led into the spring with a gardening program. So we have growing places as a partnership. And then from that, we decided, well, what can we do? I applied for a small grant called Jane Goodall Roots and Shoots and from that I got a $200 gift card, so we were able to purchase three new beds. Kelly's husband works at Monty Tech in the wood shop, so he built the beds.
He did it on a Saturday morning. It was raining, it was a lot of fun.
And then that led to more ideas. So I invited Angelo Beazall, City Councilor Angelo Beazall, into the school and he met with the students and talked all about the birdhouses that he built. And he came in, he didn't just bring the birdhouses and leave them, he came in and did a whole lesson about all the different variables, what birds would go to which type of house, if you painted this color or that type of color. He asked us to number the birdhouses when we put them up and kids could actually sit and do a study. So it was a whole educational approach that Angelo Beazall did, which was amazing. And the kids were just so excited. So those birdhouses are going up. In addition, we also had the art teacher work on stepping stones. Those will be in the garden. And the Girls on the Run program decided for their service project that they were going to create a chalkboard that can be hung outside so that kids could use the chalkboard. Did it not play?
Sorry, I didn't get started.
Okay. All the kids are talking. It didn't just, I'm just trying to hit the play button.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry, this mouse was a little messed up here.
Okay. So the Girls on the Run project did the chalkboard and that's going to be installed. And then we're hoping to have a pop-up library there as well. We reached out to the PTO and I was told today that we have two picnic tables, two brand-new picnic tables that are being delivered. So this whole project turned into a space that was just okay, but now it's going to be amazing. It's going to be a nice place for teachers to take their students so that it becomes like a living classroom. It'll be a place for parents in out-of-school time hours. They can come and visit, they can pick from the garden, and there's just a lot going on in that space. And so on June 1st, we're going to be having a celebration and dedication and that's when we'll be having the RAD Kids graduation as well. So we brought students to talk about their projects and what they've done, so we'd like to introduce them. This is Kelly. Kelly is one of the site coordinators at South Street and she works with Becky Mackey.
And we love having this program at our school. It just, it makes the school come alive. We're adding color to the building and getting so many experiences that the kids do during the after-school time that just doesn't fit in during the day. So I like to tell the kids that they're the leaders of our school, so we have some of the leaders here to talk with you. And kids, do you want to come up?
Yeah.
What does RAD stand for?
RAD Kids is with the Police Department and they teach the kids how to defend themselves.
It's like a stranger danger class.
Alex Schultz is a fourth grader. Come on up, Alex.
Come on up to the, sit up here to the microphone.
And Alex is in RAD Kids. And Alex, you can talk about what you've learned.
Have him sit down so we can hear him.
Come on over.
Come on up, don't be shy.
Come on up. Do you? Go along. Stand me up. So what's something that you have learned about?
Self-defense moves to defend you, like sweep kick, high hammer fist, low hammer fist, and more.
Now who's, who's teaching you these things?
Officer Hurdle and Officer Laqueer.
Do you want to say again? Who's teaching you?
Officer Hurdle and Officer Laqueer.
Is it fun to have real live policemen in helping you guys learn about this?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Yeah. And we also have, thank you Alex, we have Adrian Moreno. He's a second grader, right? Yeah. And he's working in the garden and do you want to tell them what you're making in the garden?
I'm making a stepping stone. I painted a flower on it.
Nice. Is that one of your stepping stones up there or no?
Mine has a flower on it.
Okay.
These are the cement stepping stones that will be in the garden?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, they're gorgeous. There certainly works.
I love the tarantula.
And this is Amarali Mabeji.
Mabeji.
Mabeji. And he's a third grader. And you're in RAD Kids, right? And you want to talk about RAD Kids?
In RAD Kids, we mostly learn about self-defense, like we learn how to defend ourselves from bad people. Like if someone's trying to grab you and you have no way, you can sweep kick them and you can just run away.
Good. Good. Sounds like a good strategy. Thank you, Amarali. This is Kaliana Moreno, Adrian's older sister, and she's a fourth grader. And she's in the garden club, right?
Hi. In the garden club, we, we get to have, like, we get to plant the things that we like to plant. We get to have the opportunity to cook things that are healthy and that are good for your body with less sugar and fattening stuff.
Good. Good. That's good.
And last but not least is Shanaya Norris and she's in third grade. And she's in both, RAD Kids and the Garden Project. You're in both, too? So go ahead, Shanaya. Go ahead and tell them what you like in either of the programs.
What I like in RAD Kids, that we can learn a lot of steps and moves to learn how to defend ourselves to be safe around strangers and other places without a grown-up and every pla, any, every, every place that you are without a grown-up. You have to be near a grown-up or you can just get taken or something.
Good.
What about the garden project? Anything that you'd like to talk about that?
Well, the garden, we, we can plant so many different kinds of fruit or vegetables, mostly vegetables we planted. And we get to, we, we all get, in terms to cut, cut vegetables or help cook with the meals.
Good job. Good job.
Did you guys do this last year? Did you grow things last year? Did you use the garden lat, no?
No.
So this is going to be your first time, you're going to plant the seeds and see them grow? Really?
Or we can just take the, the plant that's already grown and just put it inside.
Put it in there. There you go.
Want to tell them what you planted today?
That's exciting.
Do you remember what you planted today?
Oh, yeah, it was strawberries.
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 Watch, those things will really take off. Yep.
Are you going to come back with those when they're?
Yeah.
Bring us back some strawberries.
So this is the time, so.
Yeah, so on June 1st at 4 o'clock, we're going to start the ceremony. We have a little group of students that are going to do a musical performance. That'll give Officer Beef time to get the kids outfitted and ready for their graduation. And then we'll go down into the gymnasium and watch that. And then we're going to go back out into the garden and do like a little dedication ceremony. By then, everything will be out and in place and you'll see the birdhouses that the students created and the stepping stones and all of the things that they've worked really hard to make that area such a fun place to be. And that's, it should conclude around, oh, we have pizza and you can view all the exhibits that the kids have created throughout the school year. And that will be just a little bit after 5:00 and then we'll have dinner. Parents and guests are invited to have pizza and salad with us. And then we'll wrap it up, but that's the last day of programming for the elementary schools.
Ah.
Yes.
Questions? Yes?
For the RAD Kids, you guys, when you're learning these moves, are you learning them with other students or are you learning them with the police officer, an adult-sized person?
Pretty much, the adult.
Okay, so you're learning how to do this act, or this maneuver on an adult?
Yeah.
Not, yeah.
So, so I.
Police officers all rigged up.
Right, you've been to Crocker's graduation, so Officer Beef comes dressed in body armor.
Right.
And what he does is he'll, he will go after a child, he'll say, you know, hello, little boy, come with me, I want to show you my puppy. And then they will defend themselves, whether it's an arm block or a kick. And then they run away and they know what to do next, which is call 911 and things like that. So it's a whole scripted curriculum that they learn and it's things about not, not to go near stray dogs, what to do if somebody approaches you that you don't know, what to do if somebody grabs you, how you can defend yourself. So it's, it's an excellent program and it's all through the Fitchburg Police Department. They've been at Crocker for the past year and a half and they're just starting to work with the students now at South Street.
Yeah.
So it's a great program.
We're just very fortunate with our Fitchburg Police Department.
Yeah.
Do so much for our students. And Officer Hurdle, I remember when she was your side.
I had her as a student.
And she graduated from Fitchburg High School and Officer Beef graduated from Fitchburg High School and they continue to give back to the school system, so.
Okay.
Maybe that's where you're going to be one of these days.
Officer Hurdle was also a student of mine at Fitchburg State.
So if you could just send me a reminder and then I can forward the invitation to the school committee and anybody else, so.
Okay, yeah, I have a formal printed out one, a nice one.
Perfect. Definitely want to be there.
It's in my calendar, I'll be there.
Hey, great job, guys.
Mrs. Terigni, I want to say something about Mrs. Terigni. She took me on a tour of the 21st century program at South Street. When was that, Sue? A couple, maybe three or four months ago?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great things going on there. We should all take, take a moment, go out and, and observe what, what these young folks are doing, so. We should, hopefully someday we'll be able to expand it, you know?
Well, we applied for Memorial Middle School, so if we get that, that would be, we'd be up to four schools again, so we're climbing back.
And the Long Joe Middle School is up for renewal, so we're working on that grant process as well.
Okay.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
And I got an email from Ellen Gamble the other day and she bumped into Mr. Stevens and was talking about a program that the seniors have been doing at the high school. She wasn't on the agenda, but the seniors are going to be gone by the time we meet again, so I took an administrative privilege and invited her to come and talk about this program of project-based learning that's going on at the high school. So Ellen, thanks for coming.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm an English teacher at Fitchburg High and all of you have an invitation, so I figured I would take a minute and explain what this is. And it was kind of neat that Sue commented about project-based learning because that's exactly what this is. So at the high school, second semester seniors, they've got that one foot out the door. So I wanted to do something that would address the English language arts standards as well as some of the ideas of collaboration and critical thinking and problem-solving and the idea of being part of the community. So this particular program was developed by the Buck Institute for Education and I adapted it for our students. They're solving the problem of how do we revitalize Main Street? And we worked with Mary Jo Bohart at the Economic Development. She came to school, we did a walking tour of Main Street. The mayor had met us when we were doing that. The students had to come up with a business idea and they actually proposed it to loan officers. So the whole concept of authentic audience, making it not just for the teacher, but making it real. So over the past couple of months, they've been working on this. It is now coming to the final project exhibit where we will have seven business proposals on display at Fitchburg State College on Thursday. That's what this invitation is for. It's an exhibit for the hour, so it's a come-and-go, walk-in. We have a student who put together a making of the project video that will be on a continuous loop. It's about a 15-minute video. And the idea is that we're hoping people come and talk to the students. Talk to them about Main Street. They're really embracing this idea of, I live here, how can I make it better? And that was something I really wanted them to embrace. I live in the city, love the city, I want them to feel the same way about it. So I just wanted to say, come down if you can make it, stop in, talk to the students, ask them what they learned, ask them how their business could actually become reality. I told them, hey, maybe an entrepreneur will come, like your idea, and run with it. You never know.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. I have some extra invitations. I don't know if anyone wants to leave them here.
Could I just ask that? So the proposals, so did they put forth like an original idea and then it got reviewed by other people and?
They were broken into teams. So there were four students per team. They each had to do a preliminary business idea. I then had a loan officer from Webster. I then had a loan officer from Webster First, Santander, Enterprise and Workers come to school and listen to their business proposals. And then the bank officer chose the one that they think would be the most likely to succeed, so to speak. The other three proposals for the team got pushed aside, and then the team focused all their energies on that one proposal. Um, they did a more elaborate business proposal, they focused on, um, we brought in the English sta- standards of rhetoric and the idea of persuasive language. They did advertisements, websites, um, et cetera. And now they're having a visual presentation of that one business that got selected.
And these are just students that are in, like, your class? This isn't like a standard that all English-
No, this is, this is stan- this is a stan- uh, this is a senior CPA class, so, um, not remedial, not honors, the, the middle-of-the-road, average kid, um, that, it's not something that's, the project is not part of the curriculum, the standards are part of the curriculum, focusing on the writing that they did with the persuasive writing, the, um, the idea of communicating visually with the advertisement and the website. Those types of things are part of the curriculum. But the way I presented it to them is kind of new, so.
That's good, that's great.
Gotta try something new, especially second semester seniors, they're tough, they're tough.
I wonder why.
Got that one foot out the door, I'm trying to keep them in. And they're, they're, they're very excited. And I have, to be honest, not all twelve teams are gonna be there on Thursday. They just, they weren't ready for that authentic audience. Um, so there's eight teams that are going on Thursday, and those eight teams are beyond excited to present there, so. So we want people to show up, 'cause you always hate to plan a party and then nobody shows up. I think that would be really bad. So spread the word, and we're hoping to get some foot traffic, too, 'cause we're right at the college at the Hammond Lounge.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it possible that we could get a shortened version at a future school committee meeting in, in June?
A shortened version of like how it went?
Yes, yeah. Because, like, I already told you, I'd like to get the thing, but I'm gonna be gone out of state.
Also, if you're, there's, the website on the back is the project website, so if you want to take a look at that, it's got the pictures on there, the mayor's mug is on there a couple times, um, the, the interviews with the loan officers, et cetera. There's all kinds of information on that. Thank you.
Mug, your mug. Okay, thank you, Ellen. Great, and you, uh, talked about planning a party and hoping that people come, and that was the segue to the gala. Uh, the gala was a smashing success. Uh, right now, we've still got a little bit of revenue coming in, uh, but we made twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, which is quite a bit more than last year. Uh, when expenses are done, we hope to, we hope to be able to use between fifteen and seventeen thousand uh, for, um, after-school programs. So these will be grants that will go out again first beginning of September to any staff member, uh, who would like to, uh, pursue a passion and have a ten-week program, uh, in, starting in the fall. So that was just really great, and thank you to everybody who worked on it, all the attendees, everything. It's from, we have a donation, a technology donation of twenty-four HP compact computers, uh, for total value of a hundred and seventy-nine dollars each, and there are fifteen of them. We also have a donation from the Fay Club, um, of three thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. That was at a fundraiser, uh, for, uh, books, and that is a donation to South Street Elementary School. There are action items on that. Uh, we have a donation to Pittsburgh High School. Uh, actually, it's a, a grant that was applied for from the University of Rochester, the Singer Award. Not singer as in singing, but I think it's singer as in, uh, company, uh, for twenty-five hundred dollars. And that will go towards the principal's account for field trips, AP programming, any kind of incentives. And then in school choice, you all saw Dick Vaughn's, uh, request. We, last year, Pittsburgh Public Schools had the largest number of students in any school in Massachusetts sent to Boys and Girls State. Uh, and we hope to keep that first place standing. Um, so there were, I think, three students, three or four students who had yet to be funded. Um, I'm recommending that we fund two of them out of school choice. So there's a action item there for, um, seven hundred dollars to fund two students to go to Boys and Girls State. And I talked to, Dick was at the Scholars Dinner the other night, and there's, um, there's movement in the works to fund all of the students, and I said if they fall short, a small amount of money, to get back to me that they shouldn't finish up or not have someone go. Um, because this is, as you know, incredible experience, and, uh, more than once, one of our students has been the, the student to go to Washington DC, um, and represent, you know, uh, the whole state, Girls State. We had somebody, Upson, Gabby Upson, and then Michael Richard was, uh, was the award. So, good stuff. Any questions on any of those? Okay, um, so you have a handout of the slides. Uh, tonight is the first budget presentation. There are two, um, for review, and then there'll be a final one, uh, for vote. So I'm gonna do some of the slides, and then Bob is gonna do other slides. Uh, I'm presenting this, but it was not something that I did on my own. Um, Cabinet has had half a dozen or more meetings on the budget. Uh, as you know, uh, it's been a moving target. Uh, at one time, we thought we had a three million dollar deficit, you'll see that we were closer to two. Uh, and we have been working very hard to have a balanced budget with the least impact that we can have. We've also met with all of the principals. We had individual meetings with each principal, looking at their school, looking at what their needs were. And then we came together, and we've probably had two or three general meetings of the Cabinet, um, and, um, the principals. So, just as a refresher, um, everything that we, we, um, focus on is out of our Accelerated Improvement Plan. Uh, we redid it in FY fifteen, so the plan we have now is between FY fifteen and eighteen. Uh, if you want to stop me at any point with a question, just kind of raise your hand and I'll know to stop. So our first strategic objective was to ensure high-quality curriculum and instructional practice. Um, the big piece of that were units of study in reading and writing through K to four. So that work has been underway, and we are well underway of having strong units of study in that. And then, uh, focus on STEM, and that's, um, in K to eight. And a big component of that were those Life Science Center grants that we've brought before you that has allowed us to develop, you know, some real, uh, focused STEM initiatives with, uh, labs and all. And then the last one is the Early Childhood Literacy Initiative, which is the Footsteps to Brilliant, which we just rolled out a couple of weeks ago. The second strategic objective was use a collaborative inquiry process through PLCs and data meetings to close the achievement gap. A lot of this language is gonna sound familiar, because when you had all the principals come in front of you, you kept hearing terms like PLC, professional learning community, data team meetings, all of that. So we've, a lot of the work that we've been wanting to do has been to vertically align math, um, grades five through twelve. And as you know, we have a major, uh, collaboration with Mass Insight. Uh, and we have a team of people that are meeting. Uh, it is being managed through Central Office and through the principals of the schools, and, uh, a team of teachers developing a vertical alignment in math from grades five through twelve. And then, um, as you heard from the elementary principals, we've also been targeting elementary data meetings. And, uh, one of the principals talked a lot, uh, John Thompson, talked a lot about then not only meeting with his teams in data meetings, but when I've been working with him on his evaluation and talking to him about what's going on in his school, he has met with every single teacher and reviewed the data for that, for that individual teacher. Uh, the third o- objective is to ensure job embedded professional development focused on student outcomes. Um, you've heard all of the principals talk about inclusion. And you've heard them also talk about team teachers in schools, a special education teacher and a general education teacher working together. So we've continued that work of inclusion. Um, that goes back five years to, um, one of our keynote speakers was Dr. Hare, uh, from Harvard, who came. And that's when we started talking about the only way we were gonna move the needle for special education population was to move towards inclusion. Uh, an introduction of virtual and augmented online learning. Um, we had that, where was it where we were demonstrating? Oh, at the Urban Superintendents Network. So we have been working on that, the team of Jessica, Eileen, Paula.
Dina.
I think Dina.
Eva.
You're, basically, the whole tech team.
Yeah.
Has been working on this, uh, idea, and I think we brought one here one night, uh, the virtual goggles. And, um, the, the Urban Superintendents Network was doing a big presentation with the Department of Education there, uh, and I volunteered, our team, to come and do a demonstration. So last Friday, um, our team presented to all the superintendents in, the urban superintendents in Massachusetts with their curriculum directors, and there was a big contingent there from the Department of Education. So, uh, they got to virtually and in reality see what the kinds of things that are going on, um, in Pittsburgh. It was really interesting to see all these superintendents with virtual goggles at budget time. Um, sheltered content instruction with a focus on the middle school's writers workshop. Again, when you were listening to your, uh, middle school principals come and talk about what was going on in their school, this was a big focus, that writing, 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 writing. The objective number four, maximize the use of Educator eval to enhance student outcomes. We're in year five or six of Educator Eval. Um, everything that we've been doing is continuing. The piece that's a little bit new and different is that real focus on formative assessments. Summit of assessments would be your final exam, it's what comes at the end. The formative assessment is what happens periodically to test. Okay, are they understanding it? So we have both very formal formative assessments like Galileo and other kinds of assessment tools, but then you also have the formative assessments that every teacher, you know, is creating in their own classrooms. So that's where the focus has been this year, on what are the formative assessments that all of our staff, whether they're art teachers, or science teachers, or math teachers, are creating. And then the last one is to ensure a healthy school climate and culture that recognizes the social-emotional needs of our students. For two years, I've had, as our guest speaker, a focus on social-emotional learning. Uh, one of the speakers was from, um, Yale University, their Center for Social-Emotional Growth. We've had, um, Jessica Minahan, again, you heard that name a lot from our principals. Um, she is the best of the best when it comes to this area, and at least two or three of our schools have had, uh, book readings on with her. I think Rhengold has brought her in to work professionally with the staff. Um, so we're accessing, uh, really good professional development. Um, the responsive classroom, last summer, uh, we've had a turnover of staff. We have a lot of new staff across the district. There'd been a lot of focus and training on responsive classroom years ago. We have two of our own trainers, Bonnie Bear, C-Mac, and also Kathy Brady was one of our trainers. So this past summer, they did, um, Bonnie did a training for about fifty staff members in responsive classroom. And then I had asked to spell out this acronym, and I didn't do it, because I can never remember what BRIGHT stands for. Paula, do you remember what the acronym BRIGHT stands for?
No, but it's a reorientation program for students who are coming back to Pittsburgh High who may have been hospitalized or, so it's, um, it's, uh, really focused on social-emotional confidence building as they reintegrate to Main Street.
And kind of bridging that gap of coming back into school. Um, and then, uh, there have been book studies, uh, on, on school culture and student engagement. And these, again, are, are comments and words you've heard, motivation. Jeremy talks a lot about grit. Uh, that was one of the names, the things that came out at the Scholars Dinner, when, uh, Carlene Hirin was calling out to the students and saying, what words come to mind? You know, grit, growth mindset, and also the Red Raider Way were some of the things. So you really get this sense, if you repeat this stuff long enough and you stay consistent with it, uh, it has an impact. So those are the five objectives. Any questions on the objectives? So this is an updated slide on, uh, Pittsburgh High's academic progress. Um, the dropout rate at Pittsburgh High has remained at one point eight percent for a few years now, which is below, below the state dropout rate. Now, when you think of that, that state dropout rate is based on all of the schools across the state. So Pittsburgh High has been able to bring the dropout rate. It was in the double digits ten years ago, double digits, and now it's down to one point eight percent. The graduation rate rose from eighty-one point eight to eighty-six point one this pa- in one year, and that's just below the state average. So some really good stuff happening there. And we met with Jeremy this morning, uh, for an hour or so, uh, because we have a group that's working with the high school right now to look at next steps. How do, what do we do next to get to the next level of growth? And one of the things that came out was that when the staff there decide as a group that they're gonna go after something, they really go after it. And as you know, from Jeremy's presentations, attendance and dropout and graduation have been the big focus for the staff at the high school, and, and they've really made some progress. Uh, the other place, and you've heard this now so many times, has just been the increase in the number of AP exams. Students taking AP from one thirty-five in two thousand and twelve to five hundred and fifty, from, um, seventy-eight participating to two fifty. So huge jumps in the numbers. And one that we haven't talked so much about has been the number of students, um, being enrolled in at least one dual enrollment course, went from ten to over a hundred. And that dual enrollment, that is money in the bank. Because for every student who's able to do that dual enrollment and get a passing grade, that means that's a course that they will have less to take at the university. And that means savings for the family. And then just a kind of reiteration, because I think we forget what we offer here, the Twenty First Century that we just talked about tonight. Uh, and then we were applying for another school, which would give us four schools. Half of our schools would have a Twenty First Century program. The work that's going on at Goodrich Academy, it was great. I just saw a tweet or something on Facebook about the Senior Week, you know, at Goodrich Academy, and the kinds of fun things that those students are doing, 'cause I forget, we forget. Oh, yeah, there's a Senior Week going on at Pittsburgh High. There's a Senior Week going on at Goodrich Academy, too. Um, and, uh, they also, that, the prom that was talked about today, we've had a joint prom now for years. The students at Goodrich are part of the prom at Pittsburgh High. The Advanced Academic Learning Initiatives, we implemented those coaches five years ago. And they're still in place, an academic learning coach at every elementary school and at every middle school. The dual enrollment, the district-wide musical that's in its fifth year, we just finished the fifth year. The full sports offering, middle school sports for all students for no fees. So that, uh, and I have to say, I've gotta thank Mr. Stevens, that some of that's helping that baseball team.
Yep.
Because we have a, we have a feeding program.
Yep.
Eight years ago, seven years ago, I talked to Ray Casenza, and he didn't know where we were gonna go, 'cause we had no feeding program. So students were showing up at the high school, not having played in some of these sports. Gene?
I would just say, there, there is a nominal fee, but it, it also is, um, possible that if people can't afford it, they-
Right.
Yeah, so it's nothing like surrounding districts where, you know, people are paying like four hundred dollars to be in, in activity, and that's not even just athletics, that's any activity. So it's incredible that we can offer that. But I do wanna just call out, like, we depend, like, I'm, we're, we're, I think everybody on the school committee is so committed to after-school programming. Twenty First Century program is federal grant, and people need to be aware that if federal programming is cut, that's gonna decimate opportunities for kids in cities like Pittsburgh. And I think people- And I think people, I mean, this is, this is, our school system is tremendous in that it writes these grants and it competes to get these grants, but if these grants aren't even offered, then all the competition in the world isn't going to help. So it's just something that people should know.
Just as a number, what kinds of numbers are we talking about every year, the 21st Century grants?
So anywhere from 60 to about $140,000 a site.
Per school?
Per school.
So.
It declines over a number of years, but, so for three sites, it's well over a quarter of a million dollars.
Yep, that's coming in. And actually, 21st Century was by label, one of the cuts, the federal cuts that was thrown out there.
Right, and we've done a lot through the GALA programs, as many innovative things as we can to offer after-school programming, but I really think it's time for people to understand funding and advocate for that, so.
Well, and that's why I'm reviewing some of this.
Yep.
You know, we know it, we live it every day, but there are lots of people out there that don't know it. And then I added the new one, and that is the GALA-funded after-school grants. There were at least nine programs funded, probably 50 to 60 students, additional students got an after-school opportunity through the funding of those grants. Very pleased about this. As you know, we had the big rollout of Pittsburgh Flourishes, and this is the widget, this is the status widget I went on this at 1:45 today, and our students, since, since the challenge, because my challenge to them was to read 3 million words, to know 3 million words by September, they're already up to 614,477. And I would bet that if you checked it live right now, it's, it's changed. So I'm going to have to up it, I think. I think I was really lowballing them with 3 million. I think we're going to have to probably go to five. But it's a great little widget, it's right on the Pittsburgh Public Schools website, and it shows that little tally, you know, the red gets taller and taller as more kids read, learn the word count and read the books. So just to break, I swear, I think this is where I'm shifting to you.
Okay, so as Andre shifts over to me, I just want to thank the cabinet as well, because this is really a true team effort, in addition to the principals, the directors, the finance team downtown, and the, the staff in the business office. So really, at this point, this is where, just as a general introduction, this is what I call the five buckets of funding for the school district. So first of all, we have the city funds, which is the, also equivalent to the net school spending formula, which is comprised of direct spending, which you as school committee members approve on June 15th, and then there's indirect expenses, health insurance, retirement costs, school resource officers, things of that nature, that are held at the city level. So this year, or I should say next year, FY18, we're looking at a budget of, net school spending budget of 66.7 million. The budget that you as school committee members will be voting on to finalize on June 15th will be 54.2 million. That's a number that we are in agreement with the city for the direct spending. The Chapter 70 funds that the city receives is a little over 49 million, and we'll talk about that. That's 81% of the net school spending, and the Chapter 70 as a percentage of what you vote on is about 92% of the budget. The, the second bucket of funding that we receive that really is not something that the school committee votes on as part of the, the budget that I showed you earlier, is what's called Circuit Breaker, and these are funds that are provided to, I'll say, virtually every district in, in the Commonwealth to help offset costs of special education. So these funds are, help cover out-of-district tuitions, could cover special education transportation costs, in-district services for students with needs. We estimate a budget next year of about 1.75 million. The Commonwealth is projecting a 1.4% increase. And unlike city funds where we have to spend all those funds every year, if we don't spend the funds in Circuit Breaker, we can carry them over into the following year. Okay? The third bucket of money is really the grants, federal and state grants. We're talking about 21st Century earlier, Gene. Again, that, the origin of those funds are at the federal level, Title I, we are Title I district, Title II-A, Title III, and then we have the Extended Learning Time Grant, which is Long's Joe. We're projecting about 5.9 million, and I'll talk a little bit further on about where the, where the trend has been over the last 10 years. And then school choice funding. We have funds going out that follow our students, and we have funding that comes in when parents and students elect to come to Pittsburgh. So it's projected to be a little bit over a million dollars next year, and in June, in addition to the city budget, the 54.2 million, you'll be voting on proposed investments from this funding source, and typically includes textbooks, instructional supplies, the Advanced Academic Learner Initiative, coaches at the middle school level only, and technology investments across the district.
And just as a reminder, during a very bad budget season, five years ago, I want to say, we moved all of the textbooks and instructional supplies out of the city budget into school choice, because those are not salaries, they're supplies. And just as a reminder to staff, no matter how many times I say it, if they need supplies, they need to ask their principal. If their principal can't provide it, then the principal will ask me. And if there are supplies that they need to do their work, we will go to school choice and provide that. That's what school choice is for. So we need to just keep reminding everybody that they need the materials and the resources to do the work that they have to do.
Okay, another source of funding is capital, largely facilities-related. Just a little bit of a summary, as you all know, we installed two solar arrays, one at Rhinegold, one here at Memorial. Rhinegold is up and running. There've just been some connection-related issues and location of the transformer issues here at Memorial, that'll be up and running this month. The city also has made an appropriation, approved last month at City Council, to repair a retaining wall over at South Street, and the middle, Memorial, middle school auditorium seating will be opening or finalizing the selection of that vendor this week, with the work to be completed this summer. We're investigating and gathering information on some additional projects right now, an upgrade to the high school's audiovisual system, the handicap lift over at Rhinegold, we just signed a, a contract with the designer last week, the vacuum compressor pump at Long's Joe. We're waiting for some more information from our engineer there, and also we're gathering some information on a phone system that is pretty old. And lastly, Crocker Elementary School has been accepted into the feasibility stage at MSBA, and that can be a three- to five-year process until something is concluded there. So.
So I want to say here in this slide, some of these expenses were going to be in the regular budget, and one of the big ones is the repair of the South Street retaining wall. As you go down to the parking lot, there's a staircase there, and that wall is collapsing inward. That's not an option, it's not cosmetic, it needs to be fixed. That would have come out of the school budget, and in a meeting with the mayor and his finance team, that and some other capital components were taken over by the city, and they'll be part of, so you'll see later on, that helped reduce my deficit, because we had a much larger deficit, because these were things that needed to be done. But they're, they're, they're of a structural nature and a facility nature, and if we'd have to pay for them out of the regular budget, that would have meant educational services that would have had to be reduced. So that was just one of the many meetings that we have with the city, talking about these kinds of things. And I thought you'd like to see a little picture of the seats that are finally coming. There's one in my office, so if you'd like to come and actually sit in it, we have a sample. But this is something that's been a long time coming. This auditorium is central to the city. It's in a school now that's in really good shape, and the seating is deplorable. It's probably the original seating, the seats are torn, the springs are popping out, and every time there's an event, I get at least one phone call or email from somebody about this. So this is capital funding that we'll be using for this. These are, they're kind of like what's in a ballpark, but much more comfortable. But they can't be ripped, torn, written on, or anything else. But for an hour and a half play, they'll be perfectly comfortable. So the goal will be that we will have these installed here in the auditorium. We're looking to the same type of a funding mechanism to recarpet, and then we're working with the green team or the veterans team to come in this summer and completely repaint the whole auditorium, so that in September, the, not only the school, but the city, will have a local central venue with great parking and good lighting, where people can use for functions, and we already do rent the facility, but now I think we'll have an even better opportunity to, to rent the facility when it's not being used by the schools.
Okay, so getting back to the budget, so what I thought I'd do is just put together a little bit of context and background here for all of you. And if we, let's just look at the, the yellow line and the, the axis on the right-hand side of the screen, that's enrollment. So over the last four years, our enrollment has increased from about 5,400, and now it's projected to be a little bit over 5,700 for next year's funding. And over the last year, our enrollment grew 111 students, and the year before that, it was about 150 students. I've been in the district now for nine years, along with Andre. Some of the earlier years, we did not have enrollment increases, and it made, from this point in the presentation onward, much more challenging. So increasing enrollment is really, I'll say, a positive driver for, for the budget and for the district. So the, the blue bars are the direct spending that the school committee approves, the red bars are the, the net school spending that the Commonwealth sets for Pittsburgh. So the trend going up and to the right is a good thing, so. Okay? And this is just a slide that we've shared with you before and at resource subcommittee meetings. Again, the, the print is pretty small, but our Chapter 70 funding is increasing by just about 2.3 million dollars for next year, again, 111 student increase. That's very important for us as we move forward, so.
So you see the top line over on the right, change 111, the second column from the, the right, so then it shows you what the increases are based on that. So a district that has an enrollment flat or enrollment decrease really gets hurt. We know what that feels like, because for the first three or four years I was here, every year was enrollment flat or enrollment down, which means no additional money coming in.
Okay, so really, just to extrapolate a little bit on the prior slide, and probably with a little bit bigger type, you know, the, the budget that the school committee, again, will be approving is 54.2 million, I call it the, the direct spend. Then there's indirect charges of about 17.8 million. We subtract transportation, because that is not an eligible expense for net school spending, to get to the 66.7 million. Again, as, as mentioned earlier, the grants, we estimate about 5.9 million. So all in all, the, the funding from those two sources will be about 72.6 million, and then you could add on the 1.7 million as well for the Circuit Breaker and another million for school choice.
Bob, I, I wanted to say something that, to the, to the school committee, this is the second consecutive year that we've met net school spending. As a matter of fact, this year, we've exceeded net school spending.
This year, we will.
So you should be proud of that.
Thank you.
Because that's a commitment from this administration to the schools, and it's not easily, easy to achieve. What Bob was talking about, and Andre, we're talking about the capital expenditures, that doesn't happen by magic. That has to be presented to the council. And, and I believe, and I always will believe, that those expenditures belong to the city, because these buildings and the schools are ours, so we need to take care of them. But that frees you up.
Yeah.
To do what you're paid to do and educate the kids.
Well, not everybody believes that.
Yeah.
And if that were the case, if that had not been the case, let's just take that South Street wall.
Right.
I have to fix that. That means I'd be making almost $300,000 more of cuts in staff, teachers, any other staff members. And what people need to understand is there are different buckets here, so sometimes you see big numbers in facilities or maintenance or whatever, those buckets, there's things in those buckets that can't be used for staff. So it's not like there's this money, why aren't you using that money for, that's like the appropriation for the seats in the auditorium. That's an appropriation that we're going out to bid, and that's for utilities and for facilities. That's not money that's available for other purposes. So there are different, which is why Bob talked about the different budgets. There's money in grants. That money's very specific on how it gets used, you know, and when you're audited, you better make sure you used it for either the staff, or the technology, or whatever else that it was meant to be used for.
I would like to just say, I, I really thank the council for, really, their vision of what Pittsburgh is, and I think, you know, as somebody who does have school-aged children, but also somebody who owns a home here, and has to go to events where a lot of people in the past have choiced their children out of district and talked to me about it, and wonder, how could I ever keep my kids in this district? It's not just an issue to the schools, it's an issue to the city, and it's an issue to my property values, and I think it's everybody's property value, but beyond that, just a real commitment to the city that you live in. So I think, so I really do want to thank the city council, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for really recognizing that that isn't only a benefit to the schools, though it certainly is. It is really a reflection of what this city represents, in, in my view, and I, but I'd also like to ask that figure about transportation, Bob. So those are contracts, right, those are, that's based, like, we know that that's.
Our yellow bus contracts, plus our special education contracts.
Definitely, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
But I just, it really, things don't move ahead, because going back just to those memorial seats, our facilities committee going on almost eight years ago, and nothing has moved until the mayor in, you know, with his leadership and the council, who is very concerned about education, got this to move. So I mean, we're, we're very fortunate to have that leadership.
We've been talking about that for years.
Yep.
I guess maybe, you know, to look at it another way, this is probably the first non-bonding capital investment that the city has made, at least in my nine years here.
And this is, this is the people's money, this is the, this is available funds, because we've managed, and this is a credit to the finance team in City Hall, the way we've managed the budget, and you're going to see it in this upcoming budget as well. So, and a lot, a lot of help, a lot of, a lot of effort and good people behind it.
I just want to echo that. I, I think that the presentation to the city council, there was overwhelming support by the city council, and they recognized that these two projects, especially the South Street wall and Memorial seating, had been projects that were outstanding for some time, and recognize the importance of each of those. So again, you know, kudos to the mayor's office, the finance team, and the city council for recognizing those.
Well, and it's all the work that people don't realize, all the work that goes on at the office to do that, because if you're going to present that, you've got to go out to bids, you've got to have engineers come in, you've got to find out how much this stuff costs. We have no idea how much that cost, that retaining wall. It was shocking when we saw the numbers, but, you know, you've seen it, it's collapsing, it needs to be totally excavated. Then you have to figure out, when are we going to do this? That's one of the main parking lots at South Street Elementary. So now you've got to figure out, where are you going to go out to bid? When are they going to start the work? And they better have it done by the time school starts, or, you know, I'm going to be losing a lot of sleep at night. So there, and it's not just on our side, but it's also on the city's side, you know, at the, at the purchasing office. And, and I don't have a lot of patience sometimes, and I'm like, why don't we have this yet? But there are processes that you have to go through, you know, step by step.
So what I tried to do here is really just summarize where the funding is coming from on, on the city budget, and where it's going. So every year, when we begin the budget rollover process, we look at, okay, what obligations or commitments do we have to fund next year? So, you know, just starting, I'll say with the largest dollar items, our special education tuition number. Our special education tuition number is increasing by 2.2 million from last year's budgeted special education tuitions. Our contracts, all our teacher contracts, para, custodian, all the contracts are going to increase by 1.2 million dollars next year. And lastly, then we have our indirect expenses, which are going to increase around 300,000. And I should say, that's after an offset of about 550,000 for health insurance, which our grants are absorbing, and they absorbed this year as well. So this year, we actually had a structural change whereby grants and the food service revolving account picked up health insurance for those staff. So to meet our commitments for next year of 3.7 million, again, the good news, as I mentioned earlier, we have 111 more students enroll in the district for which we received Chapter 70 funding. And then what we're going to talk about a little bit more are reductions, you know, actions that we have looked at over the last, really, almost four months now since the governor's budget was announced, to have a balanced budget going into next year.
So just to simplify it, bottom right-hand corner are, that's how much our budget is increasing from 2017 to 2018. 3,700,000. First column, first number is, that's the number we got from the state for our enrollment increase. Had there not been an enrollment increase, that would have been smaller or nothing. So now, subtracting those two, we still have a deficit. So when we started working on this a few months ago, we still had a deficit of 1.4 million dollars. And that's what we have been working on. Because the left column and the right column, for me to come here tonight, has to be balanced.
I just have a question on the special education tuition. Did that number increase because more kids are going to special education schools, or is it because their tuitions have increased?
All of the above.
Both.
And special education tuitions are increased at any time of the year for any reason with no input from any of the clients. And they can increase twice in a year. And then, or in some tuitions, you could inherit a tuition for a special education student and actually never see that student with a family that moves into your city. And if they're in an outside placement of 180,000, you inherit the bill for 180,000 the following year. So some of that is predictable and some of it is not.
So next couple slides, we're going to provide you some detail on the savings, I guess, just really the savings and then the adjustments which Andre will talk about. So not to sound like a broken record here, but, you know, in addition to being green and putting solar panels on roofs, it's going to save some green here. So we project about a $78,000 savings next year on our electricity from that. The second item with regards to solar and credits, the city entered into a supply agreement with a solar developer in a neighboring town who had to sell his power to a municipality. And the mayor and his team are allocating about $40,000 savings. We have to identify one, one of our sites, which was, wasn't too hard, the high school will receive the credit, about $40,000 credit. And again, the mayor has been leading the Green Communities Initiative for the city and is chief of staff, A.J. Terigny. And about a week or so ago, we finalized the project that'll be undertaken with this year's, I guess, initial Green Communities funding at Long Joe for some steam traps, some heating infrastructure upgrades, and also some lighting upgrades. So we project that'll generate about $40,000 of savings next year. The next item is our electricity supply. There was about an 8.5% decrease on the kilowatt per hour price. Our city procurement lead, Mary Delaney, went out to bid as our contract was expiring this year through power options. So we're projecting about a $40,000 savings there. So just on electricity alone, and it's almost, you know, and solar and investments with Green Communities, that's almost $200,000. So again, we thank the
It's a credit to you too, Bob. You did a lot of hard work on a number of these projects, so we appreciate that.
A.J., and I should again give credit to the city solicitor as well because he was very involved on the panels here.
Team effort.
Total team effort. Then the next item, actually the busing contract, we're adjusting based on what the, what the contract rate will be for next year. We actually reduced a bus this fiscal year. We went down one bus. And one of the reasons that allowed us to do that was to have a consistent start and dismissal time over at McKay, which at the beginning of the year caused a little bit of
Few phone calls.
Yeah, a few phone calls, a little bit more traffic on Lower Rind Road. But again, we've been able to look at that number very closely and look at what it will be for next year. And lastly, this year, we funded about $160,000 of capital from the school building maintenance budget. So those items will not be reoccurring. And again, we're thankful for the mayor's and the city's support for the capital projects. And again, that frees up flexibility so we don't have to look at additional options that we're going to talk about in just a few, couple minutes here. But all in all, all those actions resulted in about a little over half a million dollars of savings.
And that's why this is months of working and looking. A lot of these solar things, a lot of these energy things, these are many, many meetings that have taken place between us. Also proactivity of going after these solar panels, putting them on our roofs. This is not just money that's falling in our lap, it's money that's taken a lot of work. The busing contract, you know, we worked hard with McKay Arts Academy to say, is there a way? We knew we could save a lot of money if we could get the school to go on one, and, you know, there were a lot of upset people for that first month. I received a lot of pretty nasty phone calls. But as I look at this and say, if it ended up that we saved 172,000 in busing, that's quite a few staff positions. So that's the kind of work that goes on in the office as we try to balance a budget, you know, and stay within our budget of net school spending. So that's, we went there first. Where are the places, what can we save to try to address that deficit of 1.4 million?
Just before you go on too, you know, having the budget schedule as we are starting it tonight, some of these numbers weren't finalized until the last few weeks. So had we not had any certainty around these, you know, from this list of savings, it would have gone into, or potentially have gone into the next page. So we wanted to maximize non-staffing related adjustments as much as possible.
So this is now the staffing adjustments that we're looking at. The first is at central office. I'm recommending reducing an administrator at central office and a half, a .5 clerical position. And that's a total reduction of 115,708. We have made some changes. I'm reorganizing the enrollment center. We've moved, I moved Bonnie Bear Simak, who is our ELL director. She used to have some enrollment responsibilities. ELL is one of our target areas that we need to focus on for academics. That's a subgroup that we've had some challenges with, so we've totally focused on that. And then there was a .2 part-time position in there that I'm not going to be filling. And you can see the, no, I'm sorry. That, right. So the ones without parentheses are my additions. So what we're going to do there is we removed an administrator out of that office, and now there are some part-time administrative responsibilities that need to be done. So the clerical folks in that office do all of the management of the day-to-day enrollment. But then there are times when people are asking to change schools, they're asking for special conditions in a particular school. Those are not decisions that, you know, that an administrative assistant should be making. Those are decisions that need somebody to meet with the principal, find out about the situation or whatever. So I've put in a .2 part-time position of an administrator that would come in once a week, twice a week, and find out, okay, what are the cases that are being worked on this week? Talk to the principals, talk to the parents, and then make determinations. Because we have inter, inter or intra, I can never remember which one, when it's in the district.
Yes, in the district.
Intra?
Intra.
Intra-school choice. So somebody can be in a school and asked, you know, by school choice, to go to a different school. The next one is at Fitchburg High School. A teacher reduction, a clerical reduction, a para reduction. This is still in conversation. I'm still working with the principals. So all of this is where I'm looking to go, but we're still in conversation about the specific positions, the specific locations, things like that. At Goodrich Academy, we've had a .2 tutor, and in discussing with the principal there that because of other resources that are available, they don't need that. I met with all the principals, we looked at all of their staffing. I said, okay, where are you? We printed out the enrollment at every school, we printed out the per pupil at every school, we printed out how many FTEs at every school. And then I'm trying to look at, how do I get to that number? You know, having a good knowledge of what the needs are at each school. We have a retirement of an ESL teacher at Memorial that we will not be replacing. We have, Memorial's enrollment is such, we've looked at every single school for class size, printed out all of the data, and we've seen that there are two schools where we have to add a teacher because the group that's moving up, the class is moving up, and there are fewer sections at the next level than there are now. So when you move them up, you have to add a teacher to pick up that amount of student body. And sometimes, if the class that was before them is smaller, you get to say, oh, good, we'll take that one and move it over here. But the classes, as you know from enrollment, coming up are all greater. So they're all larger class sizes. The small class sizes now are at the end of the line, but all the ones coming up are in the 400s. Whereas at one point, they were down in the mid-3s. So that's a Memorial teacher, that's an addition. At Crocker and McKay, we're making a reduction of two ESL teachers. So again, we looked at the population, the student population at ESL, and the teachers needed to be assigned to that. Crocker is the other school that we have to add a teacher because of the class size. The issue we're going to have very soon is, even if I want to add a teacher, there are no rooms. In some of the schools, we're already putting health teachers on a card, you know, we might have to put art on a card at some point, any of those electives. But anybody who's been a school principal knows that's a wave that comes and goes. Then at Rheingold Elementary, we're doing a reduction of a math specialist. And in special education, we're looking at a savings of about 250,000, and that's going to be paras on attrition. There's a BCBA at Rheingold is being moved to a grant, so I can take that out of the city's salary. And the reductions of paras will all be determined as they, over the summer, look at the caseloads, and paras are assigned by IEP. So it's not any other way, other than a reduction based on IEPs. And then we're looking at a staff restructuring in the clerical. This is still in negotiations. We've assigned a number to it, but that is something that's still in flux, still being worked on. And then at the McKay Arts Academy, what we did, because they're in an innovation school, we looked at a number of positions that had been absorbed by the city over, over time that were really the responsibility of the schools. So we looked at some of that, and then we also looked at a reduction based on per pupil and class size. But because it's an innovation school, we just gave them a number, and the school will decide how they're going to meet that number. In terms of what impact this might have on layoffs, there are very few of these positions that would require a layoff because of the nature of the positions. There will be other positions open in the district. So two things. One, it would not impact layoffs, and it will not impact unemployment because folks will move into another position somewhere in the district. Before I move off this slide, are there any specific questions about this?
Yes.
So nine para positions that, so is that based on a historical estimate about what fluctuating, you know, what fluctuates in any given year? And to me, special ed is the thing that continues to grow, so I'm kind of curious how you got to nine.
Alicia and Rowan go over every single IEP. That's what they've been doing for a whole month. Looking at every IEP at every school, what's in the pipeline, and also what we have for staffing. And based on that examination, you know, they said we can look at the reduction of nine paras in special education.
But we never know who's moving in, in the summer.
Absolutely. I mean, we have cut paras in the past, and then we've had two people move in with an IEP that says they need a para. Legally, we have no choice but to put a para, which is how we've ended up with budget deficits sometimes of 500,000. Because this is based on what we know now with the population that's in our school now.
But not, not every kid needs a para.
Right.
No.
And then we've had, we've had positions where we've, we've moved a position from one school to the next because a student who has a one-on-one para goes from elementary to middle school, or goes from middle school to the high school, and the para is not assigned to the school, it's assigned to the student. So the para goes with the student.
Of these recommendations, do these all represent people who got pink slips?
No. No, because we're not even at that point. We're going to be meeting
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We're meeting tomorrow to now start looking at, because all of this is based on what are the positions open, where are positions? The paras all have one-year contracts, so they're, they start over every year, and then we start assigning paras. But you can see here, for example, a math specialist reduction at Rheingold, that could be an elementary teacher who's certified and would take the new job at Crocker. I'm using that as an example. This is, it becomes a, a real chess game as we move people around. I mean, I've had years where we've had to cut 35 positions, and we've spent a month just trying to figure out where everybody goes. This is nothing compared to what we've had to do other years in terms of how do we manage to provide opportunities for all the folks? And as you know, in terms of our new staff last year, we had, what, 40 new staff members? We have 40 new positions, but people leave, people retire. I think we're up to a half a dozen retirees right now. People get married, people move to another state. So there are positions that open all the time. So right now, our projection, and for example, the, one of the positions is already not filled. There's no one in, there's a couple of these.
Retired, yeah.
There's a few of these positions that were mid-year retirements, and we didn't fill them, so there's nobody in those positions. So that reduction isn't a person right now, it's the reduction of a position.
Yes.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that, what you're saying is that this is not carved in stone? You're saying, you're looking at
Yeah.
this, so this is not
Well, also, it's not carved in stone because it's your budget and your, so this is my first, this is our first blush. first, this is our first blush. Here's what we're thinking. This is what we'd like to do. And, you know, you, there could be things you like or don't like, or have you thought of this, have you thought of that? You know, whatever. So this is not finalized until we come for the third time. And at that point, you'll have a munis budget, which will be the detailed budget for every school. It'll have assignments of staff to every school. And then even that one, over the summer, the numbers won't change, but the names could change. In terms of the grants, everything is still in flux. It is a roller coaster. We never know what grant is going to be cut, what grant, you know, the federal budget process has not finished yet. There's a budget that went out there, no one seems interested in that budget. So then it goes to the House, it goes to the Senate. We hear rumblings all the time about the revenue in Massachusetts is not what they thought it was going to be. You know, the drums start pounding. I, I could get a memo, you know, an email tomorrow that says, we're cutting your Chapter 70 by however much. It still has to go to the Senate, and then it goes to the Joint Committee, which you know well what that's like, and then a final number will come out. So this is our best estimate based on what we know today.
So, shift back. So, again, as we're talking earlier, just about where we look to end up for next year, and again, as Andre just said, it's, it's a moving target. So we look at having about 5.9 million in grant funding for next year. So that's the, the blue bar farthest on your right. If you look back at the blue bar on the farthest on your left, that's FY '08. So we had over $8 million back then. So after '08, you had the election, the economic meltdown, the recession. There was a lot of stimulus money that came into the school district.
The orange is the stimulus money.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's, that's the spike. Okay? So we had that, so we utilized those funds, and there were carryover allowances. So we really had that for five years. Okay, the orange, orange top, so to speak, here as you look at it from a distance. But next year's grant funding is projected to be about 2 million, a little more than $2 million less than the grant funding in '08, before there was any stimulus. So we're at, you know, 75% of where we were eight years ago, or 10 years ago, I should say. Okay?
So, and I think, you know, what needs to not be taken for granted is that through all of this, where a lot of those columns went down, we're still offering a comprehensive program. We're still offering opportunities for students with advanced learning. We're still offering sports. We're still offering music and art and all of those kinds of things.
Summer programming, technology.
Summer programming. The goal, we've been investing in technology. The goal has been, no matter what the cuts are, how do we keep a viable school district going? It's offering all of the things that our students need and deserve.
So going back to our conversation about special education, again, as I mentioned earlier, the tuitions, again, the budget is in blue, red is actual. So when you look at last year's blue, FY '17, to next year's, again, it's about $2.2 million. Okay? And when you look at this year, you'll, you'll notice that the, the red bar, the actual, is higher than the blue. And how do we do that? That's what's called the circuit breaker carryover.
Yeah.
So that carryover is helping, that, and, to be clear, the free, the transfer of some of the capital investment from the schools to the city. So it's a combination of those two items is allowing us to end this year and potentially carry over some funding for next year.
So these are the updates from the Technology Department. We finally completed, if you, I think there's one of those little boxes here somewhere, the little white boxes. We've kind of finally networked all of the city, all of the school department. There's a district-wide wireless, and that was, we used E-Rate money to fund that. 85% of that funding was from E-Rate. We deployed 650 additional Chromebooks. This was either purchased through grants or through school choice. 30 unit carts at the elementary, middle school storage boxes, the Honors Academy, and then this year was the first year that I wanted to do a one-on-one program for our seniors. We have districts around us that have one-on-one with all students. That, that would be a goal, but that's an expensive goal. And then Goodrich Academy, we provided them with additional Chromebooks and storage. We deployed 3D printers, four of them, at Fitchburg High School, two at Long Joe Middle School, and at the Memorial Middle School. So in terms of what are other districts doing, and do we have the same resources that any other district worth its salt has? The answer is yes, we do. And then the virtual reality kits, 30 units, five, five pieces to each, and 30, 30 units, five groups of those. And then just in other technology, at Fitchburg High School, we're up to 100 megabits shared, 400 megabits is what we've predicted as we increase that. The increasing the bandwidth, that will happen in July. So the bandwidth, because people are online and using video and other things which take more bandwidth.
So let me just, let me just interject there. Our contract for, with our current provider of, you know, high broadband services expired, and this is something that is funded by E-Rate, so our reimbursement on this, again, I think is around 87%, Eileen. And again, as Andre mentioned, the, you know, students are bringing more devices, there's more applications, more video, we're using more software applications. We're really going to have more state, again, allow more content to come into the schools. So.
And, and as you know, we're moving towards fully online assessment for the MCAS 2.0. So we have to be ready for that. We actually did it this year for the grades that have already been tested. Things went incredibly well. Eileen and her team are unbelievable, what they're able to accomplish in the technology area for us. We're expanding our online learning platforms. We're actually moving from an online learning platform now called Play-Doh, and our goal is to move to a platform called EduQuest. We've been piloting that at Goodrich Academy, and it's a much richer online platform, and we're hoping to go to that this fall. The Comprehensive EdTech PD Professional Development Suite, and then the expansion of using Google Apps more, and then 3D printer, and augmented reality and virtual reality. Funding challenges.
So, I guess, again, you know, given what we've already shared, you know, we have a high reliance on the Commonwealth for Chapter 70 funding. This year's rollout of the early childhood literacy that we kicked off a couple of weeks ago up at Fitchburg High, the Footsteps to Brilliance, was really only possible because we were able to partner with other institutions, Fitchburg State, a couple of private foundations. We made a contribution towards that, but excluding our contribution, we've been able to, we raised $137,000 last year to get that program going. Again, you know, the, the challenges, Fitchburg is with any other district that you read about in the paper, that's contiguous to us. You know, the needs of the students there, whether it be the social, emotional needs in the, you know, in the classrooms, in the schools, or if they require out-of-district replacement or transportation are increasing. And again, just kind of the general category on the indirect expense side is the health insurance.
And, I mean, Footsteps to Brilliance is another example, like the solar power. You know, three years ago, I wanted to do that. I was, there was no way I could take $200,000 out of our budget. What was I going to, increase class size? What would we do? So that was a lot of work, and a lot of it, you know, is Bob's work on reaching out to the Wallace Foundation, to different organizations, telling them about what we're doing, getting them involved, and that, those foundations and those partners are paying $137,000 of the $200,000 that we're putting out to provide this literacy for the whole city, not just for the Fitchburg Public Schools. So here are the things that are still out there.
Yeah, it's still out there, again, kind of just like, kind of our, the wrap-up stage here, we're in the home stretch. Again, the grant funding, still waiting to find out what the details will be. As Andre mentioned, there was an article in the Globe last night today. This year, the state is facing, I think, about a little over $400 million budget gap. There's talk at the state level about potentially some type of taxes, whether it'll be the millionaire's tax. There's, you know, the Foundation Budget Review Committee that has been around lobbying for more funds for education and transportation infrastructure, which may be funded by that tax if it, if it goes forward. Again, we're, every day, we learn some new information, and we adjust our budget accordingly. So really, what you have on the, in this hearing is the, the best information and best projection of what we have as of today, but that could change tomorrow. And, and again, there's still, as Andre mentioned, we're still in some discussions and negotiations with some people in units. And again, we have retirements, non-renewals, new hires, just kind of the normal ebb and flow of staff turnover. And again, just moving, sometimes, as we mentioned, there was one case, people moving from one bucket to another, from city to grants or school choice or in between, that can all happen. We'll see how, how it all unfolds here over the next few months. And, and again, just kind of as a reminder and a wrap-up on, on the calendar, tonight is the first hearing. And a little bit different schedule at City Hall. Historically, each department is presented, the mayor has a much more consolidated schedule. We're in two weeks. He, the mayor and his finance team will present the budget to the City Council. Then that'll be referred to the Finance Committee two weeks after that, on June 13th, where they'll meet, and then immediately after that Finance Committee meeting, they will approve the budget. But we'll be back here on June 5th for the second budget hearing. And then on the 19th, and probably a little bit before then, we'll prepare the, the annual budget book along with the detailed line item budget by each school and department. So, that's where we end up. Any questions?
On the school choice million dollar figure, right? Which I know is small in comparison to all the other things, but are we seeing, with the enrollment increase, are we seeing less people leave the district? Are we, like, so we've always, it seems like, since I've been looking at these budgets, we've had 2 million go out and 1 million come in.
It's stayed pretty, it has stayed, for the last four or five years, it's paid, stayed pretty steady. If there's a shift, it's in like a single-digit shift.
Okay.
The, the rate of the, out has slowed down dramatically.
Dramatically.
Okay. Thanks.
And, and I think that's due to the fact that we've maintained a comprehensive program, and we've added what needed to be added, and, you know, I think we saw it at the Scholars' Dinner. You know, in my 12 years here, that was double the size of most Scholars' Dinners that I've gone to.
Oh, yeah.
30 students.
I was just curious.
Scholars' Dinners were like 12 to 15 students.
I was just curious if some of that tickup of enrollment is something that we're starting to really see change in people going out? So, but we wouldn't see it that way.
I think, yeah, I, I think they're, I think they're unrelated.
Okay.
Because, you know, our, you know, our turnover rate, just in general with our students, you know, and, you know, Fitchburg's affordable vis-à-vis, you know, our, our local peer communities. You know, there are a lot of reasons. You know, when we had this architectural study done a year or so ago, we had people look at it. And again, I think part of it is that affordability issue, and then just kind of the natural turnover. But so far, that turnover has worked out in our favor.
Yeah.
In terms of increased enrollment.
I think one of the things, we're keeping students here. And it's not so much getting them back, but people who did move out, if they're in seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th grade, they're not moving back.
Yeah.
You know? So it's, we need to maintain our students that we have.
Right.
And instead of worrying about coming back.
We have had, and I just look at the closer, but we've had a little bit of an uptick in people coming back for their high school experience here.
Yeah.
You know? That, we have some pretty unique offerings at the high school that are very attractive to some parents. If you're looking for a STEM program or the Honors Academy, there's some real options there.
I look back, we lost six students to Oakmont. It was strictly about lacrosse.
Well, remember that when I came and said we need to put lacrosse in, and you all said, yep, let's put lacrosse in. We talk to students right now that are here because we put lacrosse in.
Yeah.
We would have lost, I would say, probably overall, at least a dozen students.
A team's worth.
A team's worth, had we not put in lacrosse. So that may seem frivolous from an outsider to say, why are you doing that? Why are you spending money on sports? 12 students who stay here, times 6,000, is, you know, more than a teacher's salary.
Yeah.
So every, you know, every six students that we keep here, you know, that's, that pays off. That investment, you know, keeps paying off.
Do we see less and less kids going to the charter school?
That seems, I think, I mean, we know...
Is that number pretty steady, the number of students going to the charter school?
No, I don't have that information out of the top of my head, but I can certainly get that for you.
Yeah. I think if I can just add, and this has been an issue at the state level, is the state has not been able to fulfill its charter school reimbursement for a few years now. So, and again, that's an indirect charge, just, just to be clear. The school choice out and the charter school tuitions are in that $17 million. And it's part of the charter school formula for reimbursement. There's, you know, graduated scale, so to speak. But now, I think for the last three years, and my guess would be this year as well, given what, you know, where the state is at, the city will not receive that full projected reimbursement as they, you know, project on cherry sheets. But again, who knows? We'll see.
And Mayor, I sent you an email this afternoon of some other superintendents who are working with their mayors.
Yeah.
To put a proposal forward to the state, especially from the gateway cities. There was other things in there. They, one of them is the eligibility issue, which hit places like Brockton. I mean, they've got $16 million deficits because of the change. It didn't hit us that way.
Yeah.
But one of the recommendations we're putting in there is that the state fund the charter school reimbursement like they said they would at 100%. That would make an incredible difference. So when that comes around, I'm sure we want to be on board with that letter.
There's a look, they're looking at the foundation budget on Beacon Hill, aren't they? The increased...
Like, looking at it.
You know, that's more than they've ever done in the past. You couldn't even get them to the table.
Well, it was interesting that the millionaire tax was, was in the article today.
Yeah.
Because that actually, for a lot of people, has more legs, and actually has more public support. When they've done surveys and polls, the millionaire tax has more public support than, you know, than looking at the, the Chapter 70 formula. Because the issue with the Chapter 70 formula is, you're going to give to Peter to take away from Paul. That's where it hits a wall.
Yeah.
Because if you redo a formula, somebody's going to gain in the formula, and someone else is going to lose. And that's when, you know, every town's rep starts to get active. So this is just the first blush. As you think about this and look at it, if you have other ideas, if you have questions, just email them to me. And if there's stuff that you'd like to have incorporated in the second presentation, when I come back, we can look at that.
Questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have action items to vote on? Going to bundle them? 17-8... 17-850, up through and including 17-855.
Motion to bundle those items and approve them all?
Motion made.
I'm sorry.
Motion made, yes, I'm, go ahead.
Sorry, were we, did you need to review that school committee meeting calendar at all? Or did we...
I thought we had.
You know, I don't see it on here as a vote, so.
I think she was just...
Yeah, action items.
Is a vote, is a vote required on that?
Have the agenda in front of me.
It's 850, first one.
17, 850.
Oh, yeah, right, it's the first one.
I mean, I don't personally have any questions about that calendar, but I didn't know if we should...
You've already had it come before you, I think, for two readings.
Okay, all right, it's just the draft.
We've had a second on the bundling. All right, second to bundle, 17-850, up through and including 17-855. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. So a motion to approve those. Motion made and seconded to approve 17-850, up through and including 17-855. All in favor? All opposed, is unanimous. No need for executive session, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion made to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.